Grace, mercy, and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. Greetings and welcome to our Wednesday evening Bible study. This is the outreach ministry of the Community Baptist Church of Sandston, Virginia. We are delighted to be before you on this evening. And tonight, we're gonna take up our stewardship development teaching. And this is session number two. And we decided to take the entire month of January and commit it to the teachings of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, on our Lord's Day for our church school hour or so that we're together, that a message would be brought, a lesson would be taught. And we would do that for those five Sundays. And then we would put the book of Ephesians on hold for a month and commit to the teaching of our stewardship development. Session number one, we wrapped it up on last Wednesday. But actually, we decided to bring you the Lord's Day message instead of it. So perhaps at some point in time, we will get session number one up before you. And let me just briefly give you session one in a nutshell. I've looked at the life and ministry of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for first. In other words, his first words, and that would be for session one, were to his earthly parents, Joseph Mary's husband, his stepfather, and Mother Mary. And he shared with them, once they found him in the temple, sitting, asking questions, and answering questions, that his response to them was, "Know ye not that I must be about my Father's business?" So that statement would be his life statement. And we came at the teaching from this angle, that those who are closest to us know without a shadow of a doubt the business that we truly are about. And in this case, as born again Christians, it must be about our Father's business. So if you are a young person, your parents ought to know that you are about the Father's business. If you're a husband, your wife, your children, your family, friends and loved ones ought to know that you are about the Father's business. And it's not something that we began and come to a place where we cease. No, we must be about the Father's business all the way until either the Lord comes for us, receive us in the air, or he sends death for us, who must behave and to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. Well, tonight, this is session number two. And we're gonna look at another first. So let's look at Matthew, chapter three. And I'm gonna read beginning at verse number thirteen, verse thirteen through seventeen. Then cometh Jesus from Galilee to Jordan unto John to be baptized of him. But John forbid him, saying, "I have need to be baptized of thee, and cometh thou to me." And Jesus answering said unto him, "Suffer it to be so now; for thus it becomeeth us to fulfill all righteousness." Then he suffered him. And Jesus, when he was baptized, went up straightway out of the water, and lo, the heavens were open unto him, and he saw the Spirit of God descending like a dove and lighting upon him. And lo, a voice from heaven saying, "This is my beloved Son, in whom I am well pleased." That was great. Eternal Father in heaven, we want to thank you for your presence. Thank you for your Spirit and the Lord Jesus Christ, who is the audience of one. And for your holy word, Father, I pray now that you would open the scriptures, open our understanding, that we may behold great and wonderful things out of thy law in Christ's name. Amen. I began this session tonight by asking a question. Since this is stewardship development, teaching and training, when God looks into the earth and he looks within the whole of Christianity, meaning that there would be the true church, then you'd have those isms and schisms and cults and what have you. But the question was specific to when he looks into what the church claims to be. In other words, the true church along with those who say, "We are the church." What does he actually see? Well, for starters, and I gave them, number one, an opportunity to respond to that. And it was an open-ended question. So finally, they kind of brought it in a direction in which I wanted to begin with. Number one, when he looks into the earth, he sees a church, one that is alive. It's not perfect, but it is alive and vibrant. This church teaches the Bible. Things are done decently and in order. The believers love their pastor, and they love the Lord Jesus. They have pooled the resources, putting them together, and they have a beautiful edifice. They have a, just a, you know, a striking sanctuary. And the property and the grounds are immaculate. That is the church that is alive and vibrant. And the believers on the Lord's Day can't wait to get to the church. And on Wednesday evening, and when they have these breakout sessions during the week, sometimes they're in church three nights a week. And they just can't get enough of being in these groups. And they see what they have pooled their money and resource together to have a place that not only is beautiful, but it's something that they can say that our children can have a place to come in, and their children, you know, if the Lord tarries. That's the church that is alive and vibrant. The next church would be the church that is dead, but it thinks it's alive. It's dead. This church is dead, but let them tell it they're alive. They make their boast about things that are biblical, things that are godly. But when it comes to putting it into practice, they give the illusion on Sunday that they are the real deal. In other words, the dead church that thinks it's alive, believe that they're the only church. That's it. This is the only local New Testament church. Okay. The next church is the church that has potential for growing. It, it's not growing, but it has potential. It has a good foundation, sound in the faith. But it hasn't reached the plateau of, of growing, but there is potential. The next church is the church that is not gonna grow. This church is not gonna grow because there is a mindset, a heart position and posturing that we don't wanna grow. We, we wanna stay the way we've always been. We, we don't want this thing called growth, because growth might mean change. And change is sometimes difficult. And, and I may lose my place in change. That's the church that's not gonna grow. Then you have the church that is the pastor's church. This church, the allegiance is to the pastor. And in most cases, he's affluent, he's charismatic, he's educated, or he can make up for that in other areas. He's of great origin, and he's well-connected. He could be financially well-off or, you know, of means. You know, these folk will come out on the Lord's Day because he may have a, a basketball star or a political person to come out. On Wednesday night, you don't know it's a who's who. And people don't come out because they love God. They come out because they are enamored with their pastor. And he can pretty much tell them anything, and they just take it in. Then you have the church that this church is a body-led church. They don't, they don't, you know, the, the pastor, "We need you to teach and to preach the word of God, but we will take care of everything else." Matter of fact, we don't even want your oversight. Then you have the church that is a political church and a patriotic church. So every Lord's Day, you're gonna hear about their favorite party, and you're gonna hear something about patriotism. Every Lord's Day, and you get some Bible, but that's what you're gonna hear. Then you have the last one, and I'm sure there are others. It's just a worldly church. The pastor, you know, he's fly, he's cool. You know, he doesn't dress like, you know, like what we would call the stereotypical pastor of yesteryear. You know, he's cool, he's fly, he's in. You know, he, he uses ebonics. He, he's split verbs. You know, he, every now and then, he might even cuss. But he's gonna quote rappers, entertainers, you know. But, but he's connected. He's connected to the culture. And that church, they're not interested in the Bible. Matter of fact, he doesn't even open a Bible. You know, he may have a, you know, a little electronic device, and, but, but it's not Bible. It's, it's more of a coaching. So I asked that question because, one, we are a certain type of a church. And when God looks into the earth and he sees the community Baptist church, what and who does he see? And if he had to write a letter to us, like he did to the seven churches that are in Asgermana, could he write a letter to us? Could he write a letter to your local church that would say that, "I know your works"? And let me back up and say this, and preface it by saying, once he uses an aspect of his divinity, seen in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks, as he's there in the midst of the church, having the seven pastors in his right hand, or the seven messengers. Once he brings an aspect of that revelation, bring it to bear upon the community Baptist church and upon your church, could he say, "I know your works," and give a clean bill of health? That he would have no citations, no violations? In other words, we could read it and say, "The Lord should just continue to do what you're doing." I know the church that he's interested in, and that is a church that is alive and vibrant, passionate about him. Let's get into our lesson. Tonight, we're gonna begin with our scripture requirement. And since this is new to the social media audience, I'm gonna begin with our theme. It's growing in grace and in the knowledge of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. That's crucial, because a church that is growing by just learning about Christ, but not growing in grace, will be a church that's not balanced. And a church that is growing with knowledge only about Christ, but not giving that knowledge out as God the Father administers grace, and God the Son administers grace, and even the Spirit gives grace, as it is recorded in Revelation, that the Spirit gives a measure of grace also, that we practice what has been preached to us. We practice what has been taught to us to love God with all our heart, mind, soul, and strength, and to love our neighbor as we love ourselves. And a church that is growing in grace is a balanced church. It's a church that continues in the apostles doctrine and in fellowship and in the breaking of bread and in prayer. But if you have a church that's only in, interested in the apostles doctrine, but no fellowship, you know, in other words, if we can just make it through the Lord's Day for these two hours and a half, I've had enough of y'all. I wanna go home. I wanna go to my world. And if I can come out on Wednesday night, and if I can tough it out for about an hour and fifteen minutes with Pastor Dabney, I, I just wanna go home after that. I don't wanna see nobody else from the church. No, no, it doesn't work that way. It needs to be where the church is a community. The church, actually, the believers are the neighborhood in which we live, because we have one thing in common. Well, multiple things in common, but we have one thing in common, is that we have the same Father. We have the same Lord and Savior. We have the same Spirit, and we have the same diet, the word of God. Our goal, and I should say, our objective here, is making the absolute most of our stewardship of our time, talent, and that would be God-given ability and treasure. What is our goal? To glorify God through Jesus Christ. Our model is Christ Jesus, our Lord. Our mandate, the Holy Scriptures. Our motivation, once again, is the glory of God through Jesus Christ. Our scripture for this session, and we have two references. One here is in our handout, and the other is just, I'm gonna make a reference to it. And that is, "Let a man saw account of us as of the ministers," that would be underroars or oarsmen, servants of Christ, "and stewards," which would be a house manager. And this is not a, a manager of a dump. This is a manager of an arrangement, God's arrangement, the things pertaining to the kingdom of God, of the mysteries of God. This is where it dials in on all of us. Moreover, it is required in stewards that a man be found faithful. First Corinthians, chapter four, verse one and two. And then we had a reference to Hebrews, chapter three, and verse one through six. Tonight, our study will take us to, remember, we're dealing with the Lord's first within his public ministry or even in his life. Session one dealt with his first words to grownups. It revealed what he must be about. Tonight, it's our Lord's first public appearance in his ministry. And I say ministry, but it would be when he comes on the stage after those eighteen years of silence from when he was found in the temple by Joseph and Mary, to when he becomes thirty years old, and then he goes out. And we have read the passage of scripture. And he appears in his earthly ministry, but he has some benchmarks he must meet. He has some thresholds that he has to cross. Beginning with, Jesus Christ comes to John the Baptist to be baptized. Matthew, chapter three, and verse number twelve. Now, this is the second meeting of John the Baptist and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. They met, not necessarily formally, but thirty years prior. In Luke's account, Luke, chapter number one, and verse thirty-nine, this is after the angel Gabriel has come and given our Lord's mother the news that she's gonna conceive and bring forth a son and gonna call him Jesus. He also enlightened her to the fact that her cousin Elizabeth, that she was with child, and she was in the sixth month of carrying John the Baptist. And she was in her senior years. In verse thirty-nine, "And Mary arose in those days and went into the hill country with haste, into a city of Judah, and entered into the house of Zachariah and saluted Elizabeth. And it came to pass, when Elizabeth heard the salutation of Mary the babe, that is, John, leaped in a womb, and Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Ghost." Now, I wanna take up that last part first. And I shared this on the Lord's Day, that, yeah, we all are theologians. All of us have a point of view when it comes to the scriptures, when it comes to who God is, Christ, angels, the Spirit, judgment. We, we all have our own theology. Well, here, when Mother Mary, and this is sound-induced, in other words, when she greeted Elizabeth, her cousin, John the Baptist, six months, she's pregnant, when he heard her voice, he leaped. Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Ghost. This is too important to miss. When Christ Jesus, he's the Holy One within his mother, and John the Baptist, who is his forerunner, and Elizabeth, her cousin, when the two of them came together, the Spirit of God revealed his presence. He revealed his presence, that he is overseeing this process, that he's the one who has led Mary into the hill country for this visitation. Now, we were taught that the Holy Ghost was not given until the church age. And that, yes, he would come upon kings and priests and prophets, as God sees fit. Well, we have an instance here where Elizabeth is filled with the Holy Ghost. In another place, the Lord Jesus Christ was the one speaking about John, that there was no one any greater than John, that John was filled with the Holy Ghost in his mother's womb. And in verse sixty-seven, Zachariah also was filled with the Holy Ghost. Beloved, let me just drop this in right now. Let's not tell God and others what God cannot do. Let's not make God into our own image. Let's not reduce him down to the things that we can't do and don't wanna do. And many of those things he's told us to do. God is God. And if the Spirit of God is gonna be the one according to the sovereignty of Almighty God, God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, if he's gonna be there for this visitation, and he's gonna make his presence known within conception and within Mary bringing forth her son into the world, and then even Elizabeth, John the Baptist, that the Spirit of God would be present. John leaped in the presence of the Lord. I find this interesting, is that when he heard the sound of the voice of Mary, John leaped. And he leaped as to say, and then this, the text doesn't bear this out, and I don't wanna add anything to the word of God. It's as if the, the joy of the Lord filled the baby John with joy, and he leaped. But it was as if he was saying, "Now, I'm the Lord Jesus' forerunner." And it's almost like, listen, I'm about to be born, and I'm ready to go to work for him. I'm ready to start running for the Lord Jesus. This particular passage of scripture actually rivals our new birth. When we were born again to the Lord Jesus Christ, now, he was there. He's that Holy One that's in his mother's womb. But he was there as being the one who's the head of the church when we were saved. And we were being, he was dealing with us by the Spirit of God with sin and righteousness and judgment. And we believed the gospel, we obeyed the word, we repented of our sins. And when we were saved, the joy of the Lord filled our soul. And some of us, we did leap for joy. And watch this. And we were ready, as John, who was the forerunner of the Lord, six months, he had the Lord by an age, like John, in, in a very symbolic way, John was ready to leap into action, to go run for the Lord, just like we were. And I shared this tonight, many who were sitting in that room tonight, when they got saved, they were filled with the joy of the Lord. They got him, they went up the hill and started telling folk about the Lord Jesus Christ. And they were filled with passion. They were filled with hope. They were filled with anticipation and expectancy. But the question of the hour is, "Ye did run well, but who hindered you? Who hindered you that now, that you would not obey the truth?" This has not happened. This preoccupation has not come by those, not by the one who called you. 'Cause a little bit of leaven, leaveneth the whole lump. Love it. What we can glean from this account is that when we were saved, the joy of the Lord we had, the passion of the Lord we had, and we leaped into action, we leaped into service. Some of you, you ran well. Who beat you back? That's what that word hindered means. Who did you let beat you back to the point where as you got to the place where you no longer obey the truth? You don't get up early and get into the presence of God? You don't stay up late in his word? Your, watch it, watch it. Your relationship with God is more a cosmetic. It's where you show yourself off on the Lord's Day. But when you get to yourself, you don't spend time with him. And when you do, you do all the talking. It was one time when you'd go in, and God would do all of the talking. You didn't even know what to say, because you was prostrate on the floor. We're talking about modeling Christ, being like the one who came into the world to redeem us from our sins. Next. Our Lord, he leaves Galilee. He comes to Nazareth. He leaves Galilee, he comes to Jordan, to John, to be baptized. The next point was this. John hindered Christ from being baptized. I mean, it's right here in the text. He forbade it. Now, we have to give John credit. John reveals that he was human, even though he had the Holy Spirit. And he was logically approaching this. And he was logically approaching this and in a realistic way. In other words, here in verse number fourteen, "But John forbid him saying, 'I have need to be baptized of thee, and cometh thou to me.'" In other words, John is saying, listen, the greater has come to the lesser. Logically, that makes sense. But this is not right, John, because number one, this is not about you. And if I could make a point right here, beloved, in our stewardship development training, it's not about you, and Dennis, it ain't about you either. See, when we start, even though it makes sense, even though it, you know, it kind of adds up in our, you know, within our simple math, it's not about you, John, and who baptizes who. All you have to do is really do the, watch this, do the math the way the Lord has presented it. Watch this, in verse thirteen, "Then cometh Jesus," that's Jesus, "from Galilee to Jordan, to John, to be baptized." You add that up, that's why he's there. This doesn't have anything to do with you, John, when it comes to what you think it is. And that's one of the issues in the church, is that we make the church about us. And there are one or two folk who done already resigned to the place to say, this church can't function without me. It, or, or it can't function without us, or it can't function without this particular group over here. But God is so far beyond that. God doesn't have anything that cannot function without him, even when it comes to sin, and I shared this years ago, is that when we sin against God, we actually have to take something that belongs to him, turn it around, and then disobey God with what belonged to him. If it's a sin of the Spirit, we're using the Spirit that he gave us to know him. If it's sins of the flesh, watch this, he gave us a body, and if it's immorality, it was given to us, yes, to house our soul and our spirit, but also, we're saved, it's the temple of the Holy Ghost. So number one, in the fellowship, the church is not the pastor, and the church is not all that's important, it's above the Lord Jesus Christ. We don't teach him like we ought to, we don't preach him like we ought to. Listen, folk leave confused about who the Lord Jesus Christ is. Listen, the Lord Jesus who walked the earth, the historical Jesus, thank God for him, but he's one and the same, he's glorified. He has risen from the dead, he has ascended to the highest heights. He's there at the right hand of the majesty on high. So number one, if God's in it, the Spirit of God is gonna be present. That's point one. Point two, like with John and the Lord Jesus in Mary's womb, and John in, in, in Elizabeth's womb, when Mary said what she said, and John leaped, that's gonna be joy as it was with John when we were born again. And we leaped into action, we're ready to, to go run for the Lord. Ye ran well, according to Galatians, ye ran well. Chapter five. "Who did hinder you that you should not obey the truth?" Yes, it, it was your boat that moved from the peaceful shores. It wasn't, it wasn't God, God didn't move, he's still one and the same. And John the Baptist hindered the Lord. He forbade him from being baptized. But it was the Spirit of God who had brought them both together thirty years ago, and now thirty years later. And see, the Lord Jesus did not allow John to hinder him from being water baptized. And that was the same way with us, we didn't allow no one to hinder us when it came to doing the work in the will of God. But we ran well. "Who hindered you?" I'll tell you, who hindered you, it may not have been the same person who hindered me, but it was probably some of the same stuff that we didn't obey the truth. This persuas- persuasion, verse eight, "Cometh not of him that calleth you." A little leaven leavened the whole lump. 'Cause this right here, as the Lord answered it, he said, "John, suffer it to be so now, for thus it becometh us to fulfill all righteousness." Why does the Lord from glory need to be water baptized? He said, because it's the right thing to do. The Old Testament, you have the preparation for the advent in the fullness of time for the Lord Jesus Christ to come into the earth. And to guarantee that event, he showed up, up on a number of occasions. Abraham, Joshua, Moses, and others. In the Gospels, and I want you to turn to John's Gospel, chapter one, and verse twenty-nine. He just shared with John the Baptist, "Permit it to be so now, for it fulfilleth all righteousness." Listen to this. "The next day John seethed Jesus coming unto him, and saith, Behold the Lamb of God, which taketh away the sin of the world. This is he of whom I said, 'After me cometh a man which is preferred before me.'" For he was before me, he's the ancient of days, he's the Lord from glory. "And I knew him not," underscore that, John said, "I didn't know him. But that he should be made manifest," watch this, "to Israel." Underscore, that he should be made manifest to Israel. "Therefore am I come baptizing with water." Now that's why I'm doing what I've been doing, and he's getting ready to answer why the Lord Jesus is there to be baptized. Okay? And John bare record saying, "I saw the Spirit descending from heaven like a dove, and it abode upon him. I knew him not." Listen to this. "But he that sent me to baptize with water," and remember, he did that, that the one that John said, I didn't know, even though he my cousin, I didn't know him like that, that he should be made manifest to Israel. "The same said to me, upon whom thou shall see the Spirit descending and remaining on him, the same as he which baptizes with the Holy Ghost. And I saw and bare record that this is the Son of God." In the Gospels, the Lord Jesus Christ was actually revealed to the forerunner, the one who was the one who was born six months ahead of him. The one who said, listen, I'm a voice crying in the wilderness, make ye straight the path, make a highway for the Lord. He's the forerunner. But John needs to know when the one who is gonna do the running, the serious running, running all the way to the cross. The one who loved us all the way to death and the grave and back glory to God. John needs to know when Christ is on the scene, because as he said, he must increase, but I must decrease. So he had to be revealed to the forerunner. He had to also be made known to the men that God the Father would give him out of the world, his holy apostles, including Judas Iscariot. And as the text indicated, thirdly, he had to be made manifest unto Israel. God is not doing this thing, you know, in a corner. He's doing this thing out in the broad daylight, he's doing it where everyone can see it. That's why the Lord had to be water baptized. Had nothing to do with sin, had nothing to do with repentance, had nothing to do with any of that, and everything to do with what God the Father had revealed by the Spirit to John, this is the one who is the Son of God. John said, "I know now." That's what this is about. And this reveal what would be the remainder of his life, for this fulfilleth righteousness, seeing that Jesus Christ is the righteousness of God. And the church, the blood-bought church of Yeshua Hamashika, is the righteousness of God, imputed righteousness, the righteousness of Jesus Christ, not our own. And beloved, once we come to the place where we have an, a, I must be about the will of the Father, and that when we came into this new salvific relationship, that we had passion, and we had joy, and we rolled our sleeves up, we tied our sneakers up tight, and we started to run. And that's what it's gonna take, getting our passion back, getting our joy back, 'cause God is still in the same place that he was. Some of you, the reason why you, you not running like you was, is because God didn't do what you asked him to do. Yeah, Big Mama died, you prayed, but Big Mama still died. That reminded me of David. David prayed for his son that was conceived out of a doctrine. And he prayed, and he fasted, and for seven days, he sought God with tears and agony, crying out, child died. David, he gets up, changes his clothes, washes up, puts on new clothes, clean clothes, refreshes himself, and then he goes into the house of God, what does he do? He worshiped. He worshiped in the face of the will of God being done, that was not what he wanted, but it's what God allowed and what God did. Beloved, we gonna have to take it the way God calls it. If God calls it a strike, and we think it's a ball, tha- tha- that's a strike, glory to God! However he deals with us, however he presents the situation, however he allows whatever he allows to come, that's what we gonna have to do, or if not, we gonna find ourselves where we've always been, and we won't make progress as a church. Many churches have taken on the same nature as their pastor. I don't want this local New Testament church taking on my, on my nature and character, 'cause I got flaws in me, I want this church follow me as I follow Christ, and when I don't follow Christ, don't follow me nowhere. Church to be alive and vibrant, and it's a place where folk want to run there, get their seat ahead of time, glory to God! See what the Lord might do. And if he doesn't do anything, and that's hard for God not to do anything, because we just, his presence is, is, is sufficient for us, life. And that we would be known for the righteousness of God in what we say and do. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for taking first when it come to Christ and lifting up to us occasions in our life that rival these settings, how Christ did not allow what John the Baptist to hinder him, and how we didn't allow certain people and situations to hinder us when we first got saved, but the same situations now causing us to fade away from God to the point where as we are not even doing right, exercising the righteousness that's in us by the grace of God, revealing Christ. So Lord, we thank you for convicting us, you convicted me tonight, you ran your word sword right through me. Have mercy, Lord. Try us again. Lord, we want the passion back, we want the excitement back, the anticipation of what you may do, and thanking you for what it is you're doing in the moment and what you've already done. Hallelujah. So thank you, Father, in Christ Jesus' name, amen. Lovely, we want to thank you for tuning into our broadcast. There are those of you who may not know where we're located, we're located in Sanford, Virginia, just about, I don't know, five miles or so east of the airport, and we're at the corner of Williamsburg, that's about sixty, we headed to New Kent toward Williamsburg. Uh, we right there at Elko Road and Williamsburg Road, uh, three nine nine one Williamsburg Road. We'd love for you to come out on Wednesday night, we, like I said, we were in the midst of this teaching for Stewardship Development Institute, and, uh, and to come out on the Lord's Day. Church School Hour starts about ten, and, uh, and then about eleven fifteen, we get started with our, our worship and praise. Well, we would love to have you come out and, uh, be in prayer for us as we pray for you, we thank you for your prayers, your encouragement, thank you for those of you who follow the ministry, you wave at us from time to time, we appreciate it, and for those of you who support us, uh, we do thank you. Well, until next time, beloved, be blessed.